All right, it is Monday, November 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Well, call our meeting to order and start off with the roll call, or yeah, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call.
Simonsen. Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coleman. Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Okay, do we get approval for tonight's agenda?
Full move.
Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. There's no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coleman. Oh, sorry. Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Next is public participation. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to get up and address the council? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to address the council? If not, we'll move on. Item six is presentations. Our first one is Aaron McCully with the chamber report.
Hi, everybody. So since my last report, this will, I guess, cover so far in 2025. We've had a successful year for the chamber and even more to come. Following up with the first impressions program from last year and using our funding from the grant or received along with the city, we did create the new Macocata brochures. And because of the city partnering with us on this, we were able to highlight more than just the chamber members. They've been placed around town and also at the caves to draw people in from there. And so far from what we're hearing, they have brought some extra people into town. The chamber is working with others in the community on a mural map project that we received grant funding for from the Creative Places Accelerator Program. We're currently interviewing artists and then we'll move forward with the community project, which will be hopefully two mural maps that will be located on the north and south entrances to town. One of the big highlights this summer was the Timber City Adventure Race. We were able to increase our advertising this year with a grant that we received from Iowa Tourism. That included billboard advertising and Roku ads as well this year. The participation in the race was similar to last year, but car- community participation after the race was increased. So all in all, it was a very successful event. We anticipate it growing each year. The chamber has been happy to partner with the city to help get those new snowflakes ordered. We're looking forward to those going up and are actively working on the new banner designs for the downtown business district. These new banners will feature the new Visit Macocata logo and will be banners that can be left up all year instead of like the current ones that are changed out seasonally. As you all know, the chamber was also approached to partner with the city on the Visit Macocata destination marketing campaign. The chamber board, along with myself and Linda, are very excited to get this up and running along with the help of Robert Abbott. There are definitely great things coming for the city of Macocata. It's a wonderful life is quickly approaching and we expect it to be a big success like last year. While the decorations may look a little different in the Gloveck Park area this year, the event will still have just as many, if not more, activities and attractions than even last year. So we hope that attendance keeps on growing. And along with this, obviously, the shop local holiday passport program will be starting soon, so look for those to come out mid-November. And all of these main events went along with all of our luncheon learns, the new teacher luncheon, Macocata Mingles, and our ribbon cuttings. We're looking forward to a strong finish to 2025. One big highlight for us, I guess, that I didn't include in the report was our web presence on social media. We are up to 100, or 1.1 million page views, which is over a 3,000% increase from the end of the year last year. So that's huge. So anyway, if anybody has any questions, that's the main highlights.
Anybody?
When is the wonderful life thing? Do you have the date yet?
December 7th.
They're thinking about taking the mound of dirt that's personally there and making a Grinch mountain.
Yeah, Christmas mountain, you know, with the mound of dirt that's still there.
Just spray paint it white and pretend like it's snow.
Stone, yeah, just let people slide down it. Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you, Aaron. All right, next is Chris Snyder with the building inspector, quarter three, 2025 report.
Good evening. The 20, the third quarter 2025 report is written in the same format as the second quarter. On page two is the, just an overview. We, the permit and inspection services, emergency preparedness, vacant and abandoned buildings, which is a slight change from the second quarter. We're trying to fine tune the ordinance, the vacant building ordinance, to see how it best fits our neighborhoods. The rental housing program, still handling the complaints, the rental license renewals, documenting the renewals in our new software program, and streamlining the inspection schedule and improving the reports. We have the nuisance mitigation, vegetation, and environmental safety. The police department handle a lot of the grass complaints. However, if there are multiple complaints on the same property, I do look at the grass complaints to turn those in, hopefully to save them a little bit of time. The safety complacency on the public way, which is the sidewalk program that we have, we're being a little bit more active in that program. It's been brought to our attention that maybe out of state or out of town realtors aren't familiar with our sidewalk program. So sometimes in the real estate transactions, those inspections get missed. So being a little bit more proactive in that and the fact that whenever I see a property up for sale, I actually document it and reach out to any Realtor or for sale by owner property to make sure that that program is consistently being followed. On page three, it details more what I briefly went over on page two. The third quarter of '25, the city issued 50 building permits, which totals $2,304. It is quite a decrease from the third quarter of '24, where we had 75 building permits for a total of $7,208.95. When you're looking at the list, again, we're seeing a lot of roofs, decks, portable buildings being brought in. Last year, third quarter of '24, there were some new homes going up, so the building permits are a higher dollar. We are still working with Conlan on the Briggs School addition. They're getting closer to filing a building permit. We've received all of the plans from the engineer and the state has approved their plans. So in the fourth quarter, we should be able to see that building permit help out our fees. And we are still working at 102 Generac with Acxiom Consultants regarding contractor condos that are still in the plan out there. So some big projects coming forward. City staff is continuing to work on the Knox Box program. We have not actively had time to reach out to businesses. However, when I am in meetings or I've made contact with three different business owners just in the last week because I had chance talking to them about an occupancy permit. And those are the times where I touch base with them, remind them about our Knox Box program, and help them understand the process of that. So we're not actively doing that. However, the Knox Box program is still something we're working on. We did mail all out, out all of our late notices for rental license renewals. There were 72 of those. Currently, 38 properties was still have outstanding balances. However, some of those, even since I typed this up on Friday, have been paid. Our vacant buildings, we are looking at in a different light. We are still focusing on the vacant buildings, however, with an emphasis on the vacant and abandoned buildings. A lot of the vacant buildings we have in town are being worked on. They are structurally sound. They're being maintained. So I'm focusing more of my attention on the vacant and abandoned buildings, the ones that have structural issues and are hazards or blights to our neighborhoods. And finally, to wrap that, that, wrap this page up on the nuisance complaints. In the third quarter, we had 129 nuisance complaints. Of, of those, 13 are still working on abating their violations at different levels. However, 89.92% of those complaints are actually abated by the property owners or by the tenants. So we've really had a strong reaction from the community to clean up our neighborhoods and make a positive difference in our community. On page four, the objectives for the third quarter. There, you can read through. There are some that I have completed and some that I'm still in the process of. As far as the ones I've completed, I've updated the permit forms and applications for building demo and relocations. I've updated form letters to, for, to express any change in the ordinance or process changes. Con, we've contacted non-participating businesses on the Knox Box program. We're still in the process of reaching out to all of them, learning. The rental license inspection rotation, I've started on that, but still in the process, so we can schedule inspections for '25. Create a process to locate the vacant buildings. We do have a good process for that currently. Learn the sidewalk program, which I was enlightened on. Some more information on that today as that process slightly changes. And monitoring the city ordinances and maybe some suggested changes. The objectives for the fourth quarter are what we, what I've started in the third quarter but haven't yet finished. So again, to contact non-participating businesses in the Knox Box program, learn the rental inspection rotation and get those inspections scheduled for '25. Formally define the intent of the vacant and abandoned building to, for enforcement and to continue to work through the city ordinance suggestion changes. The code enforcement process has not changed. We still have the complaint intake, initial evaluation, inspection, and evidence collection, compliance period, informant, informant, enforcement actions, if not abated by the owner and occupant, and the appeals and hearings. And as, as far as the definitions, the abatement, infraction are still the same. The vacant building definition has not changed, although there is discussion of changing that to the vacant and abandoned. Are there any questions?
Chris, can you tell them how the iWork system's working out? And this is the first round of renewals and Jamie and you have been pretty heavily in the system at this point. And it was almost a $10,000 purchase the council made. Can you let them know how it's working out?
The iWork system is very user friendly. In fact, I have wanted to take a training since the first day I started and have not yet taken a training because I'm usually able to figure most things out on my own. Jamie and I have worked hand in hand on trying to figure out some of the challenges. And we've really, it's such a simple system. It's very self-taught. As far as the rental license renewals coming in, we have made a few changes as far as how the documentation is done in the fact that they have certain columns with numbers that don't mean anything to us. So we can hide those columns without actually deleting them. So very user friendly. It has made sending out rental license renewals very simple.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add? Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, move on to item seven, which is the public hearings, and we have none, which takes us to item eight, to our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the October 17th, 2025 special city council meeting, the October 20th, 2025 regular city council meeting, and the October 22nd, 2025 special council meeting. We have our bills payable through November 3rd, 2025 in the amount of $542,150.79. We have the appointment of Lucy Elliott to the library board, a renewal of a Class E retail alcohol license filed by Walmart Incorporated, and an amended Class E retail license filed by Walmart Incorporated. Okay, motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
All right, that passes. Item nine is old business, and we have none. Item 10 is new business. Item A will be a resolution approving Alliance contract offer extension.
Thank you, Mayor. This is not your typical routine contract offer from Alliance, and we, we covered this at Public Works Committee with, with some, some detail. Every five years, the Alliance contract, which was original in 2008, renews a new five-year term. So earlier in my career here, we were on year one or year two of that five-year renewal. City staff, since I've been here, has been interested in determining whether or not this could come back into city operations, which it hasn't been in a long time. One of the key figures of this discussion is Jen, our local manager. And Alliance is a Missouri company with no Iowa satellites. And so Jen's not going to Missouri to continue to work, but also she has a private management contract that calls out to not compete. And I was pretty well under city guidance and attorney guidance to, don't start going after it too much. Just form a one-year solution. And that's ultimately what's in front of you tonight is for a 3% annual increase. We get Jen in a non-release. The original agreements themselves, plus the extension offer in the packet, has been reviewed by myself and your city attorney. Sometimes Alliance or other for-profit contractors in the water wastewater business or anything else, they'll claim everything's under their ownership, including the stapler. That's not the case here. The city owns all the capital equipment except for the vehicles that Alliance drives. So at some point, when this gets turned into a city function, we'll have to consider that a vehicle purchase of what's present or whether we acquire new at that time or use new, however you want to work it out at a later time. So. This has been reviewed by the Public Works Committee. I think Jen's been very honest and very good about communicating what's, what's good and bad in this determination. It's our, it's our intention and it's our plan to onboard present employees, the city employees, as we complete this process. So it'd be an interesting couple of years, but I think it's a good one. And it'll be good to have local management here. I think that good management is present and we lean on Alliance distantly for some help. But most of what you see in the water wastewater world is because of our local staff here. So. Essentially removing our profit motive out of the service.
Where's Jake tonight?
What'd you say?
Where's Jake tonight is what he said.
Can't be here till December.
Under a rock or what?
Yep, can't be here till December.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. Any discussion? Then go ahead and take the roll.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item B is a resolution approving change order number two. It's an increase in the amount of $9,820.20 payable to Jim Schrader Construction Incorporated for the Prairie Creek Recreational Trail and Disc Golf Course Project. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I know there's at least one other change order coming, but it will be a decrease after this one. But this particular item was related to the DOT bridge, the pedestrian bridge that you see out there by the Oakland Mills, close anyway, and I guess it was a foot too close. And because they were going a foot south, they had to raise it to get away from some clearance. I can't explain to you why that design was just that little off. But the, the new pilings, the material to get that bridge into the correct position resulted in this change order. And it absolutely was in the need category and not necessarily optional in this case.
Motion by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell. And there's no discussion. Take the roll.
Bennett.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item C is a resolution approving change order number one. It's an increase in the amount of $870 payable to River City Paving for the Fifth Ward and Grove Street Ball Field West parking lot reconstruction project.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I won't bore you with too much of an $870 change order, but it looks like we either had a water box count, miscount, or they added one just for better service on site. Do you remember which one?
Just a miscount. It was under the seal coating up there at Fifth Ward, and I didn't, I didn't count it. I counted two and a manhole, not the third water box. Half of this come out of John's pay?
Yes.
Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. Any discussion? And take the roll.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D is a resolution approving payment in the amount of $131,015.77 payable to River City Paving, Fifth Ward Park, and Grove Street Ball Field West parking lot reconstruction.
So.
Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item E is a discussion and possible motion accepting a bid for abatement snow removal. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Try as we may, we still ended up again this year in a one-bid scenario for this service, despite a Facebook post, and it was shared, and in a public newspaper advertisement. We received one valid bid and it's, it, it's roughly the same as what it was last year. Bidding on this was $75 per hour plus $22 a bag for salt. Did have a couple corner lot optional additions here. And contractors qualified. They do photos. They do decent, decent work. Occasionally you have to ask questions, you know, thinking about how much time was spent. It's typical of any contractor work we have. The city code says city crews. It doesn't say we have to hire a contractor, but we do in this case by resolution to handle this work. And this is work that Public Works used to do. And as I understand the story, apparently, once upon a time, we took a skid steer over someone's sidewalk or lawn. And you know how that broom acts, and all of a sudden, we're billing for way more than we should have. And there was damage in the first place. So we, we put ourselves in a position to start contracting this out. So I discussed this with our department heads today a little bit. And certainly, I think we could be a little bit more financially lean on the city crews side if Public Works Department had it. However, you know, I think we're going to enter into job capacity with Public Works Department. John and Brendan spent a lot of time today speaking to me about our duty in this code is to clear the snow and ice for safety purpose. And he goes, you're not going to find that right away in the Public Works Department as they're recovering from a major snow and removing snow still. So I guess I have some frustration that we don't get much more interest in this, but I feel like there's no reason to disqualify Blue Construction because of a one-bid scenario. It's not an outrageously high price. And at the end of the day, we do as much as we can to avoid $125 snow removal billing. But I don't think Public Works Department is adequately prepared to respond to this 24 hours after a storm. And then if it makes you feel any better about my recommendation to go to the contractor here at Blue, the city public works department clears the buildings and does what they do. But then all of a sudden, you're exposing them that much more to possible slip scenarios out on the sidewalks, shoulders, collarbones, heads. It could end up in a worse scenario than it is. So. I'm going to tell you tonight that my recommendation is to approve the bid offer as presented and support the department head's advice to me.
What's the difference in the pricing over last year?
The pricing last year was $75 per hour and then $22 per salt bag. So it's the exact same. And we bid this out as a per-job rate. So. And we have a couple options for corner lots. Having some discussion with this contractor last year about some of the billings we did and how much time was spent. You know, there's, we, we came to an ultimate solution, but part of the counterargument is, is, well, you know, after a door posting or after the homeowner gets to it finally, I'm still paying a couple guys to drive around. And that's the truck expense. I'm, I'm paying them hourly. So there's a bit more than, that just goes into $75 per hour and other than being there or per job.
The year before, we had some issues and we felt like most of that was resolved over last season?
I, I, I think we're talking about a couple of the same scenarios where we kind of came to a negotiated solution, given some of the evidence photographs we had of how much time was spent. But that was their counterargument to us is it's maybe a 50% rate of success where they go to a, a home and it's already cleared and they're wasting time driving around trucks, paying employees. So.
I just think we need to be prepared the following year. If we don't see this stuff clearing up with this company, then we need to look in-house, I think. I'll make a motion to approve, but I think we need to be looking at the long term. And they need to be aware that there's more eyes on these than there has been in the past, maybe.
Okay, well, we got a motion by Colister.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rickrell. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
All right, that passes. Item F is a resolution accepting bids for the use of snow removal equipment for the 2025-2026 snow season. So go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. The intention of this resolution, which is annual, is to commit a couple of our material suppliers, I'm sorry, snow removal equipment help to a fixed price. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't refer back to last year's pricing. Perhaps John did. But this is in the event of a large snowfall and we're going to be running people for 18 hours a day and need overnight help to handle a large snow. So that's what this one is.
The prices are basically the same as they were last year, the bids.
Okay. Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. If we don't have any discussion, take the roll.
Bennett.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item G is a resolution approving the bids for materials from January 1st, 2026 to December 31st, 2026.
I don't have a ton to add to this, Mayor, other than this is again, just getting a fixed price for the year on concrete. And even if John is able to find a better price at a different yard because Minats is booked for the day, it still gives him the flexibility to use other places, but this helps with our budgeting for the year forward.
So moved.
Motion by Colister, seconded by Alinger. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item H is a discussion and possible motion recommending TAP Trail Grant for the Summit Loop Trail.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a unique recommendation for you tonight to turn down awarded grant money because it's an insignificant amount of capital stack to execute the trail reconstruction off of the Summit Jacobson Loop. So consulted with some experts and kind of validated my feelings that it's not enough to get totally excited about. And the two winning applications were great projects. They made new trail, which is the intention of the grant. And at best, we're a maintenance reconstruction proposal, which we did as well as we could. I'm a bit comforted by, you know, finance and personnel committee. We're about to enter into budget season. We've talked about this project, so it seems like there's some motives to redo the trail or get it in better shape in the first place. But I don't think you enter into a grant agreement here and then you get into federalized wages, certain types of engineering. River City Paving's looked at this before and offered a much smaller amount than 600-some thousand to redo this trail in total, which should be able to get you by for some time until it's time to redo that entire stretch of Summit and Jacobson and maybe even include the bridge in a larger project. So. Tonight, I'm recommending you decline this by motion. If you have any questions or oppose that recommendation, please feel free. I can answer as well as I can.
Move, we decline it.
We got a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Colister. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item I is a discussion and possible motion accepting the window contract work and issuing the final payment in the amount of $19,098.75 to Glass Heritage.
So moved.
Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. Any discussion here? Take the roll.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item J is a discussion and possible motion approving payment in the amount of $21,129.63 to Proline Painting Services LLC for the library painting and re-glazing project.
So moved.
Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion here? Then take the roll.
Alinger.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item, we make it to item 11, which is Reports and Communications. Is there anything from any of the city council members? City manager?
Well, I think you skipped over your annual, or biannual, get out and vote message.
Oh, yes. That's right. If you don't get out and vote tomorrow, you can't complain about government. So remember that.
And Fire Report, just want to say good luck to those people competing, and then next week is the beginning of our leaf season.
We'll start on the east side of town.
East side of Main Street, and have your leaves out in the windrows, and the crew will be out gathering leaves for three weeks straight, so.
We'll move to the west side on the second week, the week after, and Thanksgiving week is May and Platte. Might not hurt to let people know there's nobody in Second Ward, so if there's interest, write your name in.
Yeah, and get your neighbors to back you up.
Yeah, and spread the word quickly.
Could, could we put that leaf pickup stuff out on the Facebook page?
We will, yep.
Maybe stress the fact that you don't need branches in your leaf pickup stuff?
Yeah.
Because I just drove down the street and there's just massive branches in the street.
Yeah.